Good evening and welcome to our Glendale City Council meeting. If you would like to comment on any item on the agenda, please fill out a gold speaker card and hand it to the police officer in the back of the room. The mayor will call your name when it's your turn to speak and you can make your way to the podium. All speakers have three minutes. If you'd like to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Jamie Aldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Mounner of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council meeting of February 27th, 2024. This meeting is called to order. Roll call will not be called because everybody's here, so you would take a note of that, please. The next two items on the agenda are the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. The invocation can be delivered by Pastor Jose Gonzalez from the Arizona Christian Link. Gentlemen, if it's appropriate, if you'd please remove your hats. If everyone would please stand for the invocation, then I'm going to ask you to remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Pastor?
God bless you all. According to the Bible, God is the source of wisdom, so we're going to pray for wisdom. Dear God in heaven, we thank you for each person being here tonight, Lord, and we pray that you bless their families as well. We pray, Lord, that you give wisdom to each member of the city council here, that you given their wisdom, that they will make the right decisions to be a blessing to this wonderful city. Bless Glendale, Lord, and bless this wonderful meeting. We pray your blessings and wisdom over their lives in the name of Jesus. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Approval of the minutes next on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from the February 13th, 2024 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to those minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve January 23rd, 2024?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the February 13th, 2024 voting meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Councilmember Clark to approve the minutes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes have it, do you have it, that motion carries. Proclamations and awards. The proclamation for February 2024 is Digital Technology Month in the city of Glendale. I'll come up to the microphone and how many folks have we got here that's going to be accepting this? Nobody? One person? Okay. I'm not even going to try to pronounce this name, so you're going to have to help me when we get up here, okay? All right. Okay. Pronounce your name.
Peroz Marcia.
That seemed a lot easier than looking at it on paper.
Exactly, it is.
Wow. Okay. All you folks work for IT? Okay. You get them okay? Yes? All right. Proclamation, city of Glendale, whereas the city of Glendale has always been committed to fostering innovation and technological advancements that enhance the quality of life for its residents, and whereas the innovation and technical department has consistently demonstrated a remarkable dedication to pushing the boundaries of innovation, creativity, and efficiency, and whereas the hard work and exemplary efforts of the dedicated professionals within the innovation and technological department have been recognized on a national level, earning the department prestigious awards for its outstanding contributions to the field, and whereas the quality of work of the dedicated professionals within the innovation and technological field have served successfully to showcase the city of Glendale, Arizona, as a hub of innovation and technological prowess, and whereas the efforts of the professionals in innovation and technology department have allowed their colleagues to improve the lives of the people that we all serve each and every day, whereas innovation technology department is set to continue on its path of innovation, pushing boundaries, setting new standards of excellence for the benefit of our community. Now therefore, I, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the city of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Digital Technological Month and urge my fellow members of Glendale community to express their heartfelt appreciation to the members of innovation, technology department for their unwavering commitment to excellence. So, just got to go off script here real quick. These folks do on a daily basis things that I can't even imagine. I still have a hard time getting the 12 to quit flashing on my VCR. That was a joke. Okay. So who wants this? Who's getting this?
I never would have guessed it was a joke.
Okay, we'll give this to you.
So, first and foremost, Mayor, member of the council, thank you very much for your support. This means a lot to us. Mr. Phelps, city manager, city manager's office, your leadership is the result why we are here. And to all my fellow department leaders, your partnership means a lot to us. Without your partnership, we wouldn't be able to deliver what we deliver. And finally, this team right here, this is testament of their excellence, their commitment, their dedication to do things that are beyond our limits. We have extended and expanded our capability in ways that you cannot imagine. And as I stand here and receive this, yesterday we received two finalist nomination for Smart City Awards, G.I. Center of Excellence and Emergency Management Notification System. Two systems developed and delivered on time for our city that would benefit today and into future. So, thank you. It is truly a team effort. I appreciate that.
Okay, we'll now move to our consent agenda. Items four through 14, items on the consent agenda. Their routine nature.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, we also have boards and commissions appointment. Item number three.
Well, okay, we'll get to that in a second. I'm going to finish reading this and then we'll go to that. Anyway, I don't know what happened to it. Item three. Yeah, I don't, I don't have it. Okay, well, boards and commissions, so who's doing that? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to make the following appointment to the Arts Commission and Citizens Utility Advisory Commission, Delena Hand, term expiring 1/31/2026.
Second.
That's all you got? Okay. So we've got a motion on the table, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote aye. Any opposed, vote nay. Here's your eyes have it, do you have it, that motion carries. Now we have it? You'll do just fine. Okay, so if you hold your right hand up, say aye and then state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and again, defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Give her a big hand, folks. Okay. So let's do this again. We're going to do our consent agenda items four through 14. Items on the consent agenda are a routine nature. They've been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. Now they're intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Any, we have any speaker cards for any of those items?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items four through 14?
Yes. I motion to approve consent agenda number four through 14.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the consent agenda items four through 14. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes have it, do you have it, that motion carries. Consent resolutions. Ms. Bauer, would you read consent resolutions, item 15, 16, and 17 by number and title?
Six, item number 15, resolution number R-24-08, a resolution the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a memorandum of agreement between Taros Inc., doing business as Taros Health, and the city of Glendale for the reimbursement of the remodel of the Maverick House facility to include an onsite intake selection. Item 16, resolution number R-24-09, a resolution the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a subrecipient agreement reallocation number 20-AZDOHS-HSGP-200206-03 with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the federal fiscal year 2020 Homeland Security Grant Program Award reallocation in the approximate amount of $31,739. Item 17, resolution number R-24-10, a resolution the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Phoenix for the installation, operation, and maintenance of street lighting on 43rd Avenue in the city of Phoenix. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Thank you. And no speaker cards for consent resolutions?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve items 15, 16, and 17 on the consent resolutions agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I move we pass and adopt consent resolutions, excuse me, items 15 through 17.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve items 15, 16, and 17 on consent resolutions agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes have it, do you have it, that motion's carried. Moving on to item 18, Ms. Bauer.
Award of bid RFP 23-36, authorization to enter into a service agreement with Maricopa Ambulance LLC for emergency medical transportation services. There are no speaker cards.
No speaker cards. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 18?
Yes, Mayor, I move we award the bid of RFP 23-36 to Maricopa Ambulance.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve recommended actions. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none? Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
This is an item that is a six-year contract and as such provides no continuity of oversight by city council, which has four-year terms, so I will vote nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Moving on to land development actions, number 19, Ms. Bauer.
Carrioca at Peoria and Saraval, AN-244, annexation located at the southeast corner of Peoria Avenue and Saraval Avenue, public hearing.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Tabitha Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
And we do have a public hearing on this, yes?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Public hearing is now open on item number 18. Ms. Perry.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This item was first presented before council at the workshop on November the 28th of last year. The subject site is approximately 12.5 acres in size. It's located at the southeast corner of Peoria and Saraval avenues. The subject property is currently in the county with a zoning classification of C1 for the intermediate commercial. Upon annexation, the city would apply the most light compatible zoning classification, which would be C1 neighborhood commercial. The applicant property owner's intent is to maintain the C1 zoning district classification and to develop the site with commercial land uses. The first proposed land uses is for a convenience store with gas station. The subject property is approximately 13 miles from city hall. Here's the current annexation map, just doing a comparison to where this annexation proposal is in comparison to two other application we have in the queue. The annexation map depicts the subject property abutting city property lines. Here is an aerial map just to give context of the subject property, and as you can see, to the east and to the south is surrounded by single-family residential homes. At this point, staff has not received any opposition of the proposal. And once again, this is a public hearing and that concludes the presentation. This may be a good opportunity to see if anyone wants to speak on the proposal.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone needing to speak on this item? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. There's no action required for this item, so we're going to move on to item 20. Ms. Bauer.
Protest liquor license number 60000094-L12, The Nest North Sports Grill.
Mayor, members of the council, write staff report is Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request for council to protest a new non-transferable Series 12 restaurant license for The Nest North Sports Grill located at 5843 West Thunderbird. After receiving the application, conducting our background review and working in conjunction with the owner and the owner's agent recommending denial of the Series 12 at this time so they can pursue a Series 6. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, Mayor. So I'm looking at the criteria for issuing a restaurant license, and the following criteria are listed as evidence of an inability to operate a restaurant as defined in ARS 4-205-02. And it said the department shall consider, this is for the liquor department, not the city, shall consider these criteria when determining whether to issue a restaurant license to an applicant, wherein 60% of the public seating area consists of bar stools, cocktail tables, similar seating indicating the area is used primarily for consumption of spiritus liquor. Number two, name, signage, or promotional materials of the proposed business contain a term such as bar, tavern, pub, spirits, club, lounge, cabaret, saloon that denotes the sale of spiritus liquor. Number three, proposed business premises has a jukebox, live entertainment, or dance floor. And number four, proposed business premises contain bar games and equipment. So, Mayor, if I could, I don't really have a question, although I do see on item number one noted in the staff report, it says exterior window coverings were almost wholly covered with alcohol advertisements. I've been there, they're mostly sports, Phoenix Suns, Arizona Cardinals. I think they're promotional items from liquor vendors, but they denote sports teams, they're not just, you know, drink beer. But it doesn't say anything in the state criteria about window coverings. I know it does have a video jukebox and I think it's got a few other games, but the big thing, at least the way I understand it, is that at least 40% of the sales must be food. I know they're not going, you know, tiptoe around it. I know the owner of the establishment. I think many of us up here probably know the owner of the establishment. He's got a full commercial kitchen in there. His food is actually really good. He serves, he's here tonight, he can tell us how much. I know he's exceeding the 40% of food. The high-top tables all have caddies on them with mustard and ketchup, and I've been in there and seen families eating in there. One of the other things I thought was kind of actually surprised me was large amount of alcohol displayed for sale and large amount of bar equipment. Well, he's not saying that he's not serving alcohol, it's just the criteria is minimum 40% food. And it's my understanding that the state will come back, this is just a recommendation, that the state will come back in a year and audit and do an audit, and if he's not meeting the criteria in a year, then that's for the state to decide. So, you know, we want to be pro-business here. This is a small businessman. He was in Glendale and closed down that business and then chose to relocate again in Glendale. So, I don't know if he has anything that he wants to say, but I think, I think that this is a Series 12. There's other establishments in my district that don't have a full menu that have a Series 12 liquor license. I'm not going to name them because I don't think they would want me to do that, but this, this place has a full restaurant, a full kitchen, and is meeting, exceeding the 40% criteria for food sales already and only been open, I don't know, maybe six or seven weeks, something like that. So, I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to say, but I'm going to recommend that we, that we recommend approval to the state when I make my motion and leave it open for anybody else to say anything they'd like to say.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr. St. John. How does the city determine whether there is 40% food sales as opposed to not having 40%? Do you look at receipts or how do you determine that?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I believe the detective that did the background investigation would be best to answer that question.
Okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, no, we do not determine the 40% by any audit means that's a, would be conducted by the state department of liquor.
So you don't do any, any audit? Well, then how did you decide that they didn't meet the 40% criteria?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, we're not suggesting they didn't meet the 40% criteria. We're suggesting that there are other criteria within the administrative code for the state of Arizona, and we would point to the, the items that were read by Councilmember Tomachoff into the record as the reasons for our recommendation for protest, and one of those reasons was not the 40 or 60%.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have visited the location as well. I, it's in my district, and I mean, I, when I entered it, to me, it, it came across, yes, I knew it served liquor, but it was, at least when I was there, there were a lot of families there, there, it was more of a family atmosphere, it didn't have a bar atmosphere. And so I can understand some of those criteria, but I believe that we should also approve this, this liquor license. Thank you.
Mayor. Any other question? Statement?
Mayor.
Hello?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very unusual occurrence. I, I don't think I can remember in the past eight years another time when the police department has come forward and asked us to deny. So I, I have to rely upon your expertise and your sense of the situation, so I'm going to support your recommendation for denial. Thank you.
Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I certainly respect the detective's diligence in reviewing the situation and the department's making a recommendation to us. It's important to note, this is not just a technical issue here as to which one. There is a huge dollar investment difference between the restaurant license and the bar license. And in that case, I'm more inclined to err to the direction that this proprietor will be able to make the 40, or make the necessary food requirement, and if they don't, then that would be up to the state liquor board to deal with, rather than for me to presume that they won't be able to do it and put the burden of them having to come up with a much bigger investment just to open their doors. I've spent some time in the business, I've actually spent some time in businesses like this too, but I will say that all of these locations, bar stools, cocktail tables, the bar itself, all of those are locations inside an establishment at which you can order food, so it's not like it's prohibited and therefore the square footage of how much is this or that makes a difference. So, I'm going to bet that they are going to be able to meet their food requirement, and if they don't, I trust the state liquor board will manage the problem. Thank you.
All right. So my question, John Brink, is that the owner? You're the owner? Okay, I've got one more question from a council member, then I'll make a statement, then I'm going to ask you to come up.
Thank you, Mayor. What I see here is, I don't see a detriment to the community that this business is in by way of the items that were found, items number one through 10. I am like the other council members, the state will do an audit and the state could take it up with the business owner, and they can find some solutions. After listening to your information, Mr. St. John and the detective, I feel comfortable enough now listening to that that I could support the business remaining open and working with the state, if there's anything that he needs to resolve, and the state will hold him accountable to that. So I'm in favor of giving the business owner his license. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Brink, could you come up to the microphone? So I, I look at this a little different than I think a lot of the council members. My, my first question is, is you had a previous business that both sold alcohol and restaurant food, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was in the city of Glendale?
Yes.
And how many years did you do that, sir?
Eight.
Eight years? And in the eight years, how many violations did you have from state liquor control?
None.
Say it again?
Zero.
Yeah, so to me, and this, this isn't an attack on my police department, but to me, if there's questions, I think it should be our due diligence to go back and look at the history of, of the owner. And if you've had zero complaints, problems, issues with state liquor control, you have a history in Glendale. I, I think that that should count for something, as I'm sure you do too. Eight years is a long time, and to make that recommitment to come back to Glendale is huge too. With that said, I served in Arizona Legislature and actually worked with liquor control because they're so underfunded, very few officers, they weren't post-certified, there's a lot of issues, and so I worked with them and went on a lot of ride-alongs to a lot of different locations that were issues that weren't whether they were doing their 40% or 50% or 30%, but it was worrying about selling to underage minors and over-serving, those type of issues. I haven't heard anybody talk about any of those issues at all to basically say it looks a lot like more of a bar than it does a restaurant, that's why we're going to make a recommendation against it. That don't work for me. I fully respect our officers, but, but in this case, I think that I'd like to give you a year, let state liquor control come back in a year, audit you, actually check your books, make sure you're selling as much food as you're supposed to, and then go from there. But I would like to give you a few minutes, sir, to say what you have on your mind.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me speak. Okay, well, thank you for letting me speak. I didn't come back to Glendale, I've been here all my life, I went to Glendale High. I had the Nest down by the stadium, and I was gonna continue to stay there, but we had a little problem with the landlord selling the property out for money, but anyway, back to here. The first, and actually your first question on, on, you know, percentages, we have a POS system, and we've been open five weeks, and as of today, I've got the figures here, we're at forty-seven percent food. People, all our food is handmade, it's fresh, people are coming in for the food, you don't really get this kind of percentages five weeks in, you have to wait till the word is out, you know, blah, 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 and, but we do good there, and with the, as what Councilwoman Tomachoff said, I have, I think I have twenty-two tables or something, and every one has the caddy and a menu on it, and people will, would rather sit at the high tops, and I have low tops, although we only have like six or eight of them, I forgot, but they're the last to be filled, and people like the atmosphere, their kids sit up there, and they have, you know, of course, no kids at the bar, but people eat at the bar, they eat on the tables, and don't have a problem with that. Add as for signage, it gets so hot in that building during the summer, because we are there in the summer building, that I, we needed skins on that side of the, the building for heat, and asking for security, because it's hard to see in there, and instead of me going out and buying all this, some of the beer companies offered to do it for free, so of course, that's what we did. And none, and like she said, there's nothing that doesn't have a sport thing to it. Now, if that was one of the major things, as I talked with the officer, I'd, I'd rip them off right now and put something else up there, I didn't know that was a big deal. As, we have a signage on the inside, we have four small LED signs that we have behind the bar to fill up a couple spaces, but their LEDs are not neons that shine, they can see from two blocks away. We, it's very subdued in there, the colors are gray, you know, it's, we don't have red walls, black walls, blue walls, like most sports bars do, our sports grill, well, I'm a sports grill, but I, I think I'm being unfairly comparative to this other stuff without, you know, delving into what it is. When it was like this on here, that, you don't see it, but if you come in there, and some of you have been there, I mean, it's a nice place. If I, if I wanted to go bring my wife or my kids or something, it would be that, as opposed to some of the others. And also, that was brought up, there's, I can probably give you five or six different places that are on twelves that have pool tables, dartboards, golf machines, and a dance floor, and just because, you know, it doesn't look like that, they're still on the twelve. I was told, because I was confused at first, because this is not my first go-around, that I told the officer that I believe I could make forty percent, and, or more, because that's what I did at the last one. And he says, I don't care if you do ninety percent, it doesn't look like a restaurant. So I asked him, what denotes looking like a restaurant? I went through here, and I tried to figure out how many TVs that you're allowed to have or not have to be a restaurant, I couldn't find it. It's, it's just a lot of things, and, and I have a couple mirrors that are no bigger than this, just to fill the walls up. And so, I mean, to look at it, yeah, you walk in, you see the TVs, but everything else is restaurant to me, and yes, we have a bar, but that seats sixteen people, and that, to me, that separates everything else, because we don't have menus and everything up on the bar unless they ask for it. Everything out there is, is like a restaurant, just because it's a high-top doesn't mean anything to me, obviously, otherwise, had I known that's what they would be looking at to make sure it looks like a bar, I mean, like a restaurant. So I, I just said, okay, we'll just come here to see what it is, and of course, I'll do whatever you guys say, I've always been that way, and, but I, you know, I, everything in here, I've got paperwork and pictures, if you all wanted to see it, but, and I'll be happy to give them to you if you want, but I, and that's why I'm here, I just didn't want to cave and just do what everybody says, I feel that I should have a twelve, and, and we'll go from there. And in a year when I get audited, if I don't pass the forty percent, then I understand, and we'll do something else.
Okay, and, and to clarify my statement, thanks for coming back to Glendale, you had the choice once you closed to go anywhere, and you chose to come back to Glendale.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
That, that was my point.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I took time to go visit your new location, first thing I did is I walked in and sat down at one of the high tops, they are comfortable to sit in, and I asked them about the food, so I got a tour of the kitchen. He purchased brand-new equipment and built the kitchen, and they're making their, they're, we talked about the food being made fresh, they're making pizza dough by hand, it's a great kitchen, and I'm, I'm in support of it, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, there's no other discussion, something else? Turn your mic on.
Question, what does your food menu consist of, what do you offer as food?
Well, we have, obviously, with the sports grill, we have burgers, wings, salads, great salads, and we've added, from, from the Nest there, up here, we've added pasta dish, we've put some other items on the menu, but it's mainly sports, you know, related, but we did up the menu a few things, so.
Okay, thank you.
And just, real quickly, you know, my building is forty-two hundred square feet, and my kitchen, I measured it off today, is eighteen hundred plus. Now, you, you don't have a kitchen like that in a bar setting. We do food, that's what we're known for, you can buy a beer anywhere else, but people come to our place only after five weeks, they come to there for the food, and I think the figures reflect that.
Mayor.
Yeah. John, I give you a question, I saw you had a special beef on your menu, could you explain what it is and where it comes from?
Which one?
The special beef for your hamburgers?
Oh, all our, all our beef, whether it be for our hamburgers, our chili, our carne asada, is all locally grown from the Rovi family, if you guys, you know, I'm sure you all know who the Rovis are. I grew up with Paul Rovi and his family, and a couple years ago, when they, when they had the big thing nationwide, where they, they're taking off the, you don't have to put the origin of where the beef comes from, so you could get it from Venezuela, or Bolivia, somewhere else, and that's when I chose to, to go all with Rovi Family Farms Wagyu Beef. And I, I talked with the family, and it was a lot more money for it, but within a week of me changing it, everybody noticed the, the change in it, and that's what we have. We, you know, we, I, I've been, like I said, I've been here all my life, and I like to keep things local, I, I really love the city of Glendale, I've been here since nineteen sixty, I was four years old when we came over here, and that's why I chose to stay in Glendale, so.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I just, I want to say, this is an awkward deal, because, first of all, I'm not sure why the state just doesn't do their own licensing, since ultimately, it's their decision. What they do is they ask the local jurisdiction, they give us criteria that we don't have a say in, and they ask us just to review the criteria, and then make a recommendation to our elected body, who then makes a recommendation to them. And so we don't get the, you know, we don't get a chance to weigh in the fact that we know that this operation has been a successful operation for a number of years, and that they have run a clean business, because that's not part of the criteria that were provided, unfortunately. And so in, in defense of Detective Urban, there are just some numerical percentages that are provided there, when they did their calculation, it was his opinion that it didn't meet the state's criteria, but from our perspective, I mean, this is only your recommendation, we would not obviously, you know, have any concern about reversing the recommendation, but in defense of the detective, the state asked him to look at the criteria, criteria that we don't get a chance to analyze, or to recommend other criteria, and that's how we got here. But I, I think you're moving down the right path, I think at the end of the day, the state will come in and do their due diligence and do their homework, they'll continue to monitor this business, and I think they'll be a successful business in Glendale, hopefully for many, many years to come. But I, but I think it's important to say that we want our detectives doing, you know, kind of what they're supposed to do, and in this particular case, the state, through statute, has said, review it based on this criteria and make a recommendation. He has done that, but again, we would be supportive of what I believe the direction is to the, what the council seems to be indicating.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I don't feel though any of the council is beating up our officers at all, I, I don't see it that way, so. With that said, I think Councilmember Tomachoff is the one that sort of started this.
I have the motion.
Would you, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would.
On the way you would like this to fall?
I would, and on, first, I'd like to say, with no disrespect to our, the detective, and no disrespect intended to the police department, I want to say that first, but I recommend that we, that we, I move that we recommend liquor license, approval of liquor license number, this is a long number, six, zero, 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 nine, four, dash, L, dash, twelve, the Nest Sports Grill, to the state liquor board.
Second. You have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second, from Councilmember Oldama, to approve the recommended action, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, vote, Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I'm going to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I, I have tangled with the state liquor board for over twenty years, they never met a liquor license they didn't love. This is such an unusual request from our police department, if they were told to look at certain criteria, and they felt strongly enough that this establishment did not meet those criteria, whether we like the criteria or not, and as Mr. St. John said, it's not the food criteria, I, I have, I feel an obligation to support my police department, so I am going to vote nay on this, or, no, yeah, nay on this.
Councilmember Clark votes nay. Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item twenty-one, please?
Authorization to enter into a design-build-construction agreement with Fisher Sand and Gravel Company, Fisher, for the parking garage at the Blacklot.
Mayor, members of the council here provide staff report this evening, is our Director of Engineering, or no, excuse me, the, yeah, Director of Engineering, Don Bessel.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Mayor, council members. This is an item as described, to approve the design-build contract for the structure that has been called the Blacklot Parking Garage. It is an agreement with Fisher Sand and Gravel Company, with a guaranteed maximum price not to exceed seventy-one million, eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. The last time you saw this formally was at your November twenty-first special council workshop, at that time, you had several presentations given to you about the Vi Resort, the parking structure, and related items. With that, I'm complete my presentation, be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. A real quick question for the audience, who is John Whelan? Okay, and what number did you want to speak on, sir, you didn't put a number? Okay, so this should have been a blue card that you filled out, so I'll, I'll just write blue at the top, but we'll get, we'll get to you when we get to that, okay? Okay, any questions on item number one? From anybody? No? Okay, can I get a motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described design-build contract with Fisher Sand and Gravel.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second, from Councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Mayor. Point of order, we have a card, public would like to speak on this item, sorry.
Say it again? Oh, James, James, I'm sorry. Pronounce your last name, would you please?
It's Wen.
Wen?
Wen.
Okay, and then, if you would, sir, just tell the people, the district that you live in, don't need your address, and then you got three minutes, go ahead.
Mayor and council, my name is James Wen, and I'm a resident of the Choya District. I've made a public comment previously when my last name was Ho, I had a legal name change, and my last name is now Wen. I just wanted to share my concerns about the procurement process for the Blacklot Parking Garage. At the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three workshop meeting, you were presented with an overview of the project, and on slide four of that presentation titled "Construction Delivery Overview," the city stated that Fisher would be the selected contractor, and this selection was quote, "consistent with ARS thirty-four dot six oh six." I looked up this section of Title Thirty-four, and it's for emergency procurements, which are allowed quote, "if a threat to the public health, welfare, or safety exists, and requires a written determination of the basis for the emergency and for the selection of the particular contractor." I sent an email to the city inquiring about the justification for this emergency procurement, and was informed that the city no longer needed to use the emergency procurement process, and that it would now be procured competitively. My concern here is that the results of the competitive process is a contract award to Fisher, the same company that was publicly identified as a selected contractor back in November twenty-twenty-three. This creates the appearance that the city pre-selected Fisher, and that the design-build procurement process was not fair and open. I submitted a public records request for a copy of the city's Title Thirty-four procurement policies and procedures, so I could verify whether the city was following its policies. I received this official response, quote, "The city does not have a Title Thirty-four document, we follow Arizona Revised Statute Title Thirty-four, which can be found at their website, and I was provided a link to the statute. So it appears that the city does not have any policies or procedures for Title Thirty-four procurements. Without this, how can the public be assured that the city properly conducted this procurement process? I would encourage the council to continue this agenda item to a later date until that assurance can be provided. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you. Okay, you good? Mr. Bailey? Okay, roll call, vote, Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Mr. Mayor, explain my vote.
Go ahead, turn your mic on.
Yeah, I, this is a data-driven organization, and I have not yet to see any data that demonstrates the need for a parking garage for the Vi Resort. Absent the Vi Resort, Glendale does not require a parking garage. Our city manager shared with us a while back that there was some aerial footage taken of Westgate and the stadium area, and there was tons of parking left over. There you go, we don't need a parking garage. Our residents spoke very clearly and very concise about some of the issues I wanted to talk about. There's no competitive process, there was no selection process, we spend more time on RFPs for lower-dollar amounts than seventy-one and a half million dollars, so, to, and I asked the question, was that a legal way of doing business, and the answer is yes. Well, I don't believe that it is, and it shouldn't be a practice that the city of Glendale holds on lacking the RFP process or any type of procurement process. This has, in my opinion, has favor written all over it, and I am not in favor of building a parking garage for the Vi Resort. We don't need a parking garage absent the Vi Resort. I vote nay.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Yes, I, I will explain my vote. I, I am voting aye for this item. This is a public parking garage that will belong to the city of Glendale. Vi, I know for a fact, will have a minimum of twenty-five hundred onsite parking spaces, either underground or on the surface, so I think that that will go a long way toward meeting the demand that they will need for parking spaces. I think that having a public parking garage in the Westgate area is probably long overdue. We are quickly running out of space within the Westgate area, as GoDaddy develops more and more of the vacant sites that are available within Westgate. For instance, they are building apartments on the northeast corner of Ninety-third, I'm gonna say Ninety-third Avenue, and approximately Entertainment Boulevard, they're, they're going up now, and there is a mass of them. We are running out of parking spaces in that area. We have deliberately designed that area to be a destination, entertainment location, and it will not work unless there is adequate parking for the public, so I vote aye.
Councilmember Clark votes aye. Councilmember Melner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I, I remain, I still have a number of concerns about this, enough concerns that won't allow me to support it tonight, and with that, I vote nay.
Councilmember Tomachoff votes nay. Councilmember Turner?
Explain my vote, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I see this as a, ultimately, a classic public-private partnership, I think it'll lead to more activity, more tax income for the city and our citizens in that area. It's, is a public parking garage open? It's, uh, is a public parking garage open to anyone who cares to use it and would be available to any, um, any consumers that might want to use any future development in that area as well. When I first came on this council ten years ago, one of the first things I did was oppose a publicly financed parking lot, um, in the Westgate area. And I am a hundred percent sure that it was the right thing to do then and I believe that supporting this one now is the right thing for me to do as well. But with that, I vote aye.
Councilmember Turner votes aye. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that motion does pass. With that, council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Aldama?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, um, this weekend, uh, was live at the lot here on Myrtle Avenue in conjunction with a private, uh, group led by Cesar who owns, uh, the Taqueria del Sol right here in downtown Glendale. That, that public-private partnership created a great event, a great partnership that yielded over three thousand participants or attendees. It was a great event and I want to thank our staff, Jesse Peterson and, uh, and her, and Daniel and a few others from Economic Development, but the city as a whole and then our vendors who came out and, uh, supported that event and, and, and those three thousand people. So we can do a lot more if we continue to, uh, partner with our, um, our private industry and it, it's just a great demonstration of what happens when we partner. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
No comment this evening, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would just like to, uh, do a shout out again for, uh, all those, uh, departments in the city of Glendale who helped out with our Granada Serve Day, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we went out, uh, had, uh, uh, served about ten fifteen, uh, or ten, ten homes with, with New Rock, uh, did yard cleanup, uh, painted, uh, signs on, uh, on the curbs and, uh, and distributed literature on services that are available to that neighborhood. Uh, the neighborhood had been, I, I, I feel underserved in the past and we're trying to really bring up, uh, give some hope to that community. And the PD has had a big presence in there, uh, over the last few years and really have made a cha- a big change. Our code department has really stepped up as well as our, uh, Community Services Department, Michelle Yates and her group. Uh, they have really stepped up and really made a difference for those individuals who got services on the day. And I just wanted to thank the community, the churches and all those who are involved to make that happen. I'd like to see that happen more often in even other areas of the city and, and would put that out to other council members to challenge them to, uh, to create those kind of days in their, their districts as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I would like to remind all our residents and anyone else watching, um, that this weekend is Glendale's Falcon Heritage Festival out at Suaro Ranch Park. Um, there's fifteen to twenty different stages in areas of, uh, in which musicians gather and perform, uh, throughout the historic area of the park. There's a plein air, uh, painting, uh, competition that the council will be judging on Saturday afternoon, I believe at three o'clock. It's two days, Saturday and Sunday, two days of good wholesome, family fun and great music and, and it looks like it's going to be great weather. So this is one of my favorite events that we do in Glendale and I would, if you're not familiar with it, why don't you come out this weekend and see what it's all about? Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, uh, actually I think you do, I hope you do. Uh, uh, Vice Mayor Hugh and myself, uh, working with a, a company on an Easter egg hunt coming up here very, very shortly. Uh, and it, it's expected to be incredibly large. I think it's, uh, what, four or five thousand?
And what, egg?
Kids?
Uh, I hope so. My mayor.
Uh, plus they're, they're giving away bicycles and all sorts of, of, of things. Uh, but that, uh, Sergio, what day is that?
March thirtieth.
March thirtieth. So, uh, that, that will be at Glendale Community College if everything goes off the way we hope it will. So, uh, hope to see you there. If you need any questions or, I'm sorry, any answers for your questions, don't hesitate to call us. Uh, with that, uh, citizens' comments are the next thing on your agendas. Council makes the opportunity available to citizens to bring information, business for the council that's not on the printed agenda. Uh, James, I'm going to have you come back up being that, uh, we got this other card for you also. You know, you had, uh, uh, some concerns on something. But again, for, for the record, state your name, district you live in, please.
Mayor and Council, my name is James Wen and I'm a resident of the Choya District. I'm here now to provide you with information about the budget ahead of the March fifth budget workshop meeting. At the December twelfth budget workshop meeting, you were presented with five-year financial forecast for the general fund and special revenue funds. After watching the presentation, I inquired about the projected general fund deficit of fifty-one million dollars in FY twenty-five because of the magnitude of this budget deficit and the growth in the budget deficit over the prior year forecast. According to the response from city staff, the general fund forecast was actually incorrect for FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. This was apparently due to mistake in the programming of expenditures and revenues associated with the Blacklot Parking Garage. Once the corrections are made, the projected deficit in FY twenty-five would actually become a surplus of five point eight million. However, the projected surplus of thirty-four point seven million in FY twenty-six would actually become a deficit of nineteen point nine million. It was unclear to me what the impact would be on the projected deficits for FY twenty-seven through FY twenty-nine, which currently totals a hundred and five point three million dollars. These consecutive budget deficits would explain why the general fund balance is forecasted to decrease from two hundred and thirty-two million in FY twenty-four to just eighty-two million by FY twenty-nine. This represents a fund balance decrease of sixty-five percent in just five years, which is obviously concerning from a fiscal perspective. Additionally, you were presented with a five-year forecast for the Transportation Sales Tax Fund at this meeting. Unfortunately, that forecast also contained a mistake in the beginning fund balance for FY twenty-four. The presented beginning fund balance of one hundred and one point one million was incorrect and should have been a hundred and nine point eight million, according to city staff. I completely understand that mistakes can happen and I'm not here to put the blame on anyone. I just wanted to bring these issues to your attention because it is critically important for the council and the public to have the most accurate information possible before the upcoming budget workshops. To that end, I'm requesting that the city produce and present a revised five-year financial forecast for the general fund and the Transportation Sales Tax Fund so that the council and public can have the correct information moving forward. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, John, now you're up. Just as a reminder, uh, the district that you live in and your name, sir, don't need to know your address. You have three minutes.
Well, good evening. Uh, my name is John Whelan and I live in, uh, the Suaro district. It's nice to finally meet the people that run our city. I've been living here for the last fifty-one years and, uh, and it's, uh, nice to see you folks. So with that said, what I have to talk about today, uh, Councilman Malnar is, uh, familiar with this. Um, he's helped me out to the best that he could. We live, uh, on Country Gables Drive at the, uh, east of Sixty-seventh Avenue at the end of the street. On the south side of our house, there's a block wall, but on the south, on the other side of that is the Arizona Canal. On the north side of our house is the, uh, the flood control from Maricopa County. And right next to my property is the bridle path, the service road for the flood control canal. And when we moved to that house after, uh, gosh, twenty-some years living at another place in Glendale, we got tired of the traffic noise and so I looked for a place that would be away from the traffic and away from the noise. And, uh, we found this perfect place for us. And at the time, um, the, we knew that there was a canal on one side and we knew that the flood control canal was on the other side with a bridle path for horses and pedestrians and bicyc- bicyclists. Um, but it's since about six or seven years ago, it became real popular for the off-road vehicles. Motorcycles, dirt bikes, ATVs, cars and trucks, all traveling at highway speeds that far from my property line. We've had, uh, flood control out there because the, the canal is under the jurisdiction of Maricopa County Flood Control. The Arizona Canal is under the jurisdiction of Salt River Project and we live in the city of Glendale. So for most of the last six years, seven years, when I complained about this, we got, it's his fault, it's his responsibility. And, uh, about a year or so ago, one of the Glendale officers, William Esch, uh, took it upon himself or was asked to, uh, to help to mitigate this problem for us. And, uh, he had, uh, as I was participating and, uh, Councilman Malnar was at one of our meetings with, uh, people from the county flood control to try to mitigate this and try to step up some enforcement on the off-road vehicle use because vehicles are prohibited on that, uh, flood control area and motor vehicles are prohibited on the Arizona Canal roads. Now, we're not talking, Kathy, my wife and I, we're not talking about the service vehicles that have to access that. We knew when we moved in there that they would be there and they, they are respectful, they drive courteously. We don't have any problem with that, even when they have the heavy equipment there to maintain the canals and they drain it and they dredge it out. We understand that's part of living next to a canal. But we never thought we'd be in an environment like living next to the frontage road on I seventeen. This has become progressively worse over the years. And what was, uh, a few years ago, just happening mostly on weekends with the recreational activity with these vehicles, now it is with no exception every day from about five o'clock in the evening until well after dark. And it's, oftentimes it's the same vehicles. I can cite a number of instances of, uh, of specific problems we've had. One of them was, uh, some years ago when we were a host family for Thanksgiving. I had all of my grandchildren there playing in the front yard and they liked to step on the other side of the, uh, property onto the path and play in the dirt. And they had just come back into the yard when what I can only describe as one of these off-road racing pickup trucks with the fenders cut out and the loud exhaust went flying by that far from my property line and from my grandchildren, twice.
I'm going to need you to wrap it up, sir.
I don't know what else to do.
Okay.
I, I need some enforcement action. We have asked for physical barricades, we've asked for some signage, at least some signage that says, no motor vehicles allowed. I know that there's some people that don't know they shouldn't be there, but there's other people that are not. Now, I've learned from the police department that a lot of the activity that's happening there with some of these dirt bikes and motorcycles is drug trafficking from the trailer park to the north of us into, uh, central Phoenix and beyond. And that may explain a lot of the after-dark hours of activity, but I don't know what else to do.
All right.
We, our patios and our swimming pools covered with dust. Uh, I, I am just asking for some help here. We, we need people to enforce the laws and stop this problem.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Dibbler?
Hi, my name is James Dibbler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. Today I am speaking to you regarding a few concerns. There is a pet animal problem at Forty-third Avenue and P O A near the Target Shopping Center and Fifty-Ninth Avenue and Olive Avenue near Glendale Community College. This issue is not only affecting the safety and well-being of the pet animals themselves, but also causing inconvenience and discomfort for college students, customers, and drivers. It's also affecting poorly on the state of Arizona and its effort to, to maintain a safe and walking environment for all. I would like to see the Glendale Police Department to take care of this issue before it becomes a major problem. Thank you for the time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you, James. There being no further business before the council tonight, I'd like to thank everyone for attending. If there's no objection from the council, meeting is adjourned.